So at this time, welcome everybody to the village board meeting. We will call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doro.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Landwehr.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Waschelger. President, Anderson.
Here. At this time, we're going to rise for the pledge of allegiance. However, with the importance of tomorrow and its anniversary, our willingness to stand united and our willingness to never forget, we will begin by all rising as we normally do for the pledge of allegiance. I ask that everybody remove their caps and we will stand in silence until the pledge starts. So we will rise, stand in silence for those we lost on September 11th.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Anybody that would like to come forward to the podium to speak about, to give comments on items that are not already on the agenda. I'm going to clarify, considering we have so many people here, they must be here for some reason. If you do want to speak on something that is on the agenda, please stand and come towards the podium at that time when that issue comes up. Okay? I'll go, I'll make sure that there's enough time that each person can speak if they would like to. Seeing as that no one wants to speak about anything that isn't on the agenda, we will take the first item, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of August 27th, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. I did want to add one addition. If it could be added, that at the meeting during the public comments portion, when the public was speaking about the sexual predator news in Heartland, that I did say that we will get something done and that the people have been heard. I just wanted that to be added for those purposes. So it's been moved and seconded with those additions. Does anybody else have any other comments on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the motion for the voucher for payments, the approval of the voucher for payments in the amount of $354,205.63.
I move we pay the bills for $354,205.63.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers as stated. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda are licenses or actions related to licenses and permits. First, we have the consideration of application for bartender operator's licenses with a term ending June 30th, 2020. There is only one of those that is for Lamar White Jones. The interim police chief and village clerk have reviewed the license application listed above. The applicant has successfully completed the responsible beverage service course.
I move we grant the license.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the license. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That license is granted. Next, we have application for a fireworks permit. The applicant is Lake Country Lutheran High School. The event is alumni homecoming. The date is September 28th, 2018. The application has been approved by fire chief Dean and the police department has been advised.
Also, will we approve the application for fireworks?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the fireworks application. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That license is granted. Next, we have a street use permit. The applicant is Arrowhead High School. Homecoming parade, Sunday, September 21st, 2018. This will go on from 3:45 PM to 5:00 PM. The interim police chief, public works supervisor, and fire chief have reviewed the application.
I move we grant the street permit.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the street permit to Arrowhead for the homecoming parade. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That street use permit is granted. Next, we have a street use permit. The applicant is Lighthouse Events. The event is a 5K, 10K run. The date is February 17th, 2019. The time is 5:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The interim police chief, public works supervisor, and fire chief have reviewed the application.
I make a motion to grant them the permit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant that street use permit. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That permit is granted. Next item on the agenda, we have a consideration of a motion to direct staff to develop for the village board, for village board review and ordinance restricting sex offender residency in the village of Heartland. I want to make a comment before that in case there was any confusion for the public or anyone on the board. The last meeting we had, these issues were taken up under public comments and no, though there was what appeared to be a movement in a direction or a trajectory from the village administration, the board, all of us, there was not a vote that was taken. I thought it was appropriate for the public and for this community, so I've requested that it be put on the agenda and that's why it's on the agenda, so that we officially decide as a village board whether or not we think it is appropriate and proper that we take this step and this solidifies that decision as a village.
Make a motion that we direct staff to review the ordinance?
I second.
It has been moved and seconded to direct staff to create an ordinance in Heartland restricting the placement of sexual predators. With that, well, go ahead. If anybody has any comments, it's been moved and seconded.
Would you like, I can just comment that in the intervening time since the residents came and talked about that, staff has been working with the village attorney's office, assembling information that we had in-house on those ordinances. We pulled some things from the police department. We've prepared some information for the attorney's office at their request. So they are beginning that process of drafting an ordinance that we think will be legally defensible. And that has been a little bit peculiar in the last few years in Wisconsin, but we're working through that and we hope to bring something to you pretty quickly.
Mike, you made the motion. Did you, I'm sorry, trustee Myers, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No, I think it's just something that, you know, everybody in the community wants to have. We, you know, I've been on the board for a while and it was always told me that, no, we can't do it because Madison, you know, the state has different rules and regulations and we can't do this and can't do that. Well, let's just tell them what we can do and let's us have our regulations and let's be as strict as we can because we have, it's a great place to live and let's keep it that way.
Anyone else?
Well, there'll be a hearing on it anyhow once it's drafted up, so anybody that's interested will know what the final wording will be on.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So to add to what trustee Landwehr has said, when an ordinance is created, there's usually, there's a certain system to it so that everybody knows, there's a certain amount of times that we read those at the village board meetings and the reason is, is so that the public does have a chance to come and not only hear that it's being read, but also for the elected officials that they know exactly what they're voting on because obviously ordinances, as we have all very clearly found out now, have a huge impact on the community we live in. And that is, just so everybody knows, it's not something that, when they say three readings, they'll read it at a meeting, we'll read it at another meeting, we'll read it at another meeting, and then it goes through. It gives time to make sure everything's done as proper as can be. Another thing I want to add for myself is that these issues sometimes because of the community's involvement get very easy. I've always said that. I think some have heard me say it. When the people come out like this for myself, it makes sitting here very easy for me because I'm here to represent the people in Heartland and the community. Along with that, I'm going to say that there has been some talk and some comments that have gone beyond what we want to see happen. I will tell you right now that we can draft ordinances that affect the future in Heartland. There is nothing that we can do about the past. We cannot go and retroactively, it's not how it works. Along, in a minute. Along with that, we have a wonderful police department and while things like this create anger and frustration and a lack of knowing how these things can come to be, I ask you to lean on them and not jump to your own action if it is not absolutely necessary and your life is not being threatened. So I also, last, want to say, I have also been in contact, as staff has, with the village attorney. Heartland can do something. The residents want it. I want it and we will have it. I am sorry again, I did not realize that we had nothing on the books. And as administrator Cox has said, sometimes things are difficult with the law. You have to, you know, work through some hoops. But what I also know is there is a community that is completely stirred up for an absolutely legitimate reason and they want something. And they deserve it. We're going to do it and if it's been working for all the communities around us, as this funnel has been filled up here, I can't imagine anybody coming and saying, oh, no, you're bad for doing this. So that wasn't the best way of saying it, but the communities around us have a lot less. Maybe some more people can take some of the burden instead of, we've put our time in, so to speak. So with that, you may.
I want to say to you know, passports, we were aware of this sexual thing because you can pick that up on your computer. Do you know when each one is? You can find out where they all live. That's been for years. But we were informed years ago unless they changed it and we didn't look at it, but we left it alone because we were told several times in the past years, you couldn't do anything about it. The state did that and that's how you got it and you took them. And then you had to watch them, but the police department always knew where you were and what happened on them. Just so it wasn't that previous boards didn't, never cared about it because we were just told you couldn't do anything. That's why nothing went on until now. That's all I miss.
Thank you.
Administrator Cox, is the reason that we can do something now because of some court decisions?
No. I think that it was always possible for, if the village wanted to have restrictions, it could have. I think that, at least based on the one time that I think this issue came up during my tenure here, I have to say that I think that in the discussions that took place in the village board room, previous chiefs were convincing in that, in expressing the success that the village's police department has in connecting with and monitoring these individuals. I don't know why the village board in the past has never done it. I think there's always been a possibility, to be quite honest. In the last several years, the state has restricted the ability of municipalities to impact where a, an individual with a record that involves a sexual crime can live. For example, they expressly prohibit municipalities from affecting the residency of an individual, oddly enough, who's a crime, who's accused or rather adjudicated guilty in a sexually violent crime. Figure that one out. And then a recent court case involving the village of Pleasant Prairie, the courts have not eliminated the possibility certainly, but have explained the bar, perhaps raised the bar, but have explained the bar that the court should be looking at when developing these, or that municipalities should be looking at when developing these kinds of ordinances. So all I can tell you is that the police department continues to do a great job of monitoring these folks. We're not aware of any individual who's been living in the village that has that offense in their background, has committed that crime again in the village. That notwithstanding, we certainly understand the situation and the issue and can go forward with creating an ordinance within the confines of the law that will impact where they can live in the village.
Well, then we got bad information years ago.
I did want to address that.
Because anyway, I didn't get the right information.
You didn't.
Went to the attorneys and administrator.
And it's important that you know that. It is important that you know that.
I'm just defending myself.
No, and I'm defending you also to say to the public, people were told.
No, but the opinion's gotten out where the passports never did anything and we did. And we were told, and I don't know where you go from the attorney and administrator, where you go to do anything about it.
Yep.
So.
People asked and they were told that they could do nothing and that's why, what I'm trying to say, so that the public also knows, is that now we do know that we can and we're going to. My hope is that we're going to, I'm going to, well, I'm not hoping, I know we're going to do something. I cannot, I can't imagine all of us sitting in front of you here and all of a sudden not getting done.
But if you want to check on that in your computer, you can pick up everybody and where you live. I mean, that's, you can pick that up and we've been doing that for years, just so you know, you can find it.
Mr. President, I think some, one of our citizens had a comment.
Yes, absolutely. I will, okay. Anybody from the public have any comments on this issue? Please step towards the podium and please state your name and address. Thank you, just for the minute.
Hi, my name is Cindy Kramer and I live at 1263 Four Windsway. So I've known about this for a while and it's been very concerning how many we have. So in doing, I was just kind of looking around a little bit before I came, just to get more familiar with different ordinances and different things. And I was hoping to bring it up and I couldn't, I have to go back and look again, but I looked back at the YouTube video from the last meeting because I wasn't here and I noticed that you did say that we do something moving forward with people. But in my research, I came up with a Journal Sentinel article and it was on a sexual predator who now has to move again because the ordinance has changed. So I'm wondering if that's really the case. So if we do these ordinances, can they be in fact for everybody here or is it just the people that move in from this point on?
It would only be in effect for people that move in from this point on.
Okay. Do you know why that would be taking place in Milwaukee and we can't do that?
Do you know how recent, I don't know.
It wasn't at Longo. I can find the article and get it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's.
Now, if someone moves, now.
Yeah.
They have to pay attention to the ordinance.
Yeah.
But if someone is already placed, we can't just go and say.
Yeah. No, this was a circumstance of, he's compliant and he's been doing everything and now he's obviously irritated because ordinance has changed and now he has to move again. So that's what it was based on.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the, I haven't seen the article.
I'll find it.
I know that, I can speak for myself that, and I appreciate the information and I'm kind of giving comment because this is, it's a hot issue.
Yeah.
The, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that. What I do know is that based on the studying I've done and looking in and asking legal minds and that kind of thing, you can't just go and uproot the people that were, took residence.
Yeah.
Even though it's with restriction, took residence and now new restrictions are in place.
Yeah.
That does, that's, we've got to take it step by step. First, we have to do something.
Yeah, well, this is big, so.
Right now, we've got nothing. So we got to take it one step at a time and this is going to be a step by step process until we get where we need to go. We're not going to hit this perfect out of the gate, but we're going to do something out of the gate.
And we'll help you. Hey, one other question. So I go on, do you know familywatchdog.com?
Yep.
That's, okay. My question for that is why does it say something like 32 offenders mappable and eight non-mappable? What are the non-mappable ones?
They're out, they're in the zip code, so they're in the 53029 zip code.
Yeah.
But technically, they, so that 53029.
Yeah.
Post office serves them the mail.
Yeah.
So they actually aren't from Heartland. They might be from, say, a part of Merton, but they're served by the post office in Heartland.
See, Delafield's got that too. Down 83 down there, there's another Meadow Lane down there. That's, that's got the 53029 address there.
Okay.
I don't know, it's the post office.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's, we're not seeing them, you know, that we know where they are.
The only time we don't see them is if they, if they go on the run.
Yeah.
Or if they don't, you know, if they don't go in to register with the departments that they're supposed to register to be on their, their restrictive, what do they call it? The sexual predator list.
Yeah.
They, they need to go, I mean, that's for them to take care of, but they're supposed to go in to take pictures and all this and obviously that's.
Keep them compliant, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
See, one other thing, Jeff, as long as you're doing that, what happens, and just to put up when you're studying this, what happens if a person lives in Heartland and is a resident and then he's convicted? He don't have to move or does he?
If he's convicted, he's not going to be staying at his house.
That's what I mean.
He'll be in jail.
No, but I mean.
When he comes back.
I mean, the ones that are around that didn't go to jail, that's.
I am looking into that and publicly, and I've, please don't take offense to this, but publicly, I'm not going to comment on it right now, but I am looking into that.
I just want you to know that that's what I was thinking of too.
Yeah, yep.
And they aren't all in jail because a sex offender does strange things.
Yes.
Some are very bad and.
Yes.
Some are.
Some are, yes.
Are.
That's wide range.
Kind of cagey.
But yes, I am looking into it. That is an issue that is also is coming up and I'll have more further on that in due time.
Got you.
I'm hoping to do something very quickly.
I just wanted to bring that portion.
No, appreciate it. Anybody else from the public want to speak on this to the board?
I just have a question.
Can you step to the podium? Thank you. Name and address.
Carrie Osterborn, 11524 Windsway.
Thank you.
My only question, so you said that the state has its restrictions. We don't particularly have any yet here in Heartland. What are the state restrictions? Can you have to be a certain distance away from schools, from bike paths, from parks? Are there any, you know, is that?
There, there isn't state restrictions.
There's, they can just.
They have state guidance.
Be right outside swallow school and.
They have state guidance. The state provides guidance on what they do, to the best of my knowledge. The state leaves it up to the municipalities.
Ah.
And unless something has changed since 2017, that's the way it is now. So the state does have guidance, but they don't have, you know, I mean, if someone comes to Heartland and lives, say, within 600 feet of a school, that is, someone being placed here, you know, Heartland itself does not have a restriction against that.
That's not cool.
No, it's not. We have nothing. We have no, we have no ordinance on the books.
Well, that's what you guys are going to do, right?
That is, yes, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Hi, Chief Cora. I just wanted to make a comment as to the last question. Department of Corrections has a laundry list of regulations that they have to follow when placing these offenders. The village of Heartland, as of right now, does not have an ordinance which precludes anything, so the state comes in, the Department of Corrections follows all of their rules and regulations and then the police department does also. We have a liaison officer who deals with the sex offenders, meets with them, does a face-to-face interview, gathers police reports and we do a lot of research when people move to the village. But as of now, our hands are tied by following what the Department of Corrections regulations are with an ordinance. We'll be able to accomplish much more than we can now as far as regulating, but to the best of my knowledge, there is not a state statute or a rule that says an offender can't live within a certain amount of feet from a school or bus stop or anything to that effect. So if that answers your question.
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Anybody else that would like to speak to this issue?
Peter Walker, I live on Tenny Avenue. If I can answer that question on limits and interim chief Cora, you can correct me on this and see if my citation is correct. And the stuff, the documents I gave you guys from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities last week, it cites state statute 980.08. A 1,500-foot radius applies to a lot of those, these target areas that we're talking about, but it only apply, and this is state law, but it only applies to those who are deemed sexually violent and on supervised release. So anything else? There are no restrictions whatsoever in the village of Heartland. Does that jive with your knowledge, sir? It was in the handout by.
I would have to look specifically at the state statute you're dealing with, but what I can tell you is that sex offenders come with a list of rules and regulations that they have to follow, but they're also tailor-made to the specific offenses. So what you're saying right now makes complete sense to me, but I would have to review the state statute as far as the exact particulars.
Yeah, that's fine. The citation point is in the documents I gave you guys the first meeting from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And then one other point on the non-mapped offenders that Cindy brought up, there are 31 in Heartland, but on that website, not all of them show up, even on Heartland street addresses. There's one on Glen Owen that is not listed on that map. But there are 31 in the village of Heartland, but it's a much bigger number in the 53029 zip code, mainly because the northwest numbers don't register on Google Maps, so it doesn't know how to map it out. All right, some more for my, my actual prepared statement. Those are just some things that came up before we, as we were talking so far. Trustee Doro, you garnered more votes than anybody in our last general election when we elected you to the board. Remember how many votes you received? 750.
She told me there was going to be a test.
The petition circulating in our community has over 980 signatures in three weeks. Trustee Landwehr, sir, you've served this village since Moby Dick was a middle. When, when is the last time that a movement of citizens in this village brought a petition to you guys with almost 1,000 signatures of support and this many people to a meeting? Actually, another question. If you're here on this topic tonight supporting what we're talking about, would you mind standing? I don't expect everybody to speak. So when was the last time we had this in the village board meeting with a petition to go along with it?
Well, that's why I say when the village has grown now in the last.
Thank you.
But the reason why it didn't go any further, we didn't have these people come down and when we did, when people questioned it at the time, we were told at that time from the attorney and whoever was running the village at that time, the state handles it and you got to take it and your police department checks on them, which under my understanding, that's what happened. That's why this has never been brought up because the people evidently must have accepted that until this thing's come up like it did.
Respectfully, sir, I understand you guys got bad advice then, but I also don't think anybody.
Well, yeah, if bad advice, all I'm doing is defending myself and other board members. I'm not going to say that, like, the thing came out, well, the board never did anything about it. We did and we knew that and we checked into it, but we never put it in the paper that Joe Bo was on this corner because I know some of these people.
I, I understand that you guys got bad advice, but respectfully, all of us wish you guys would have pushed harder and looked at what other communities did.
We could have done that and we didn't. The only reason guys can push this hardest because you're doing it with the people that here because they got into the paper.
No, we.
Before that never, but before that never got into the papers saying, oh, another one of these guys in town. Because we knew there was a doubt that they were, you know, there was just not much of an uproar and times have changed from back then.
Well, there is now.
Yeah, and that's fine.
And that's great.
The movement here is not something to dismiss. Respectfully peculiar in Wisconsin and what's legally defensible. I respectfully disagree. There's very well documented cases on the books and very, and laws that have been on the books for a number of years on our neighboring communities and we're, we're not one of them. So I understand it's up to you guys to draft legislation that's going to withstand court challenge, but that's what we're asking for you guys to do, asking you to do the right thing and take action. It's no secret that we have a problem by the numbers, 31 in the village of Heartland. More shocking than that, of the 31, 18 are here for offenses against kids. That's more than most of our neighboring communities have, period. We have eighteen that have offenses against kids. Our most recent addition on Burton Avenue, uh, first convicted nineteen-eighty-seven, uh, for his crime against one child, and then again in nineteen-ninety-two for another crime against another child under twelve. And after that, he was sent to prison. He violated, obviously, his probation by sexually assaulting another child under thirteen. He was a City Waukesha resident, City Waukesha resident at the time of his crime. After serving his prison sentence, rather than sending him back to Waukesha where he came from, he was placed here, right next to a bus stop. And obviously, we have nothing to prevent him from being sent here to Hartland. He has two other offenders, two other offenders in the two buildings next to him, and five others, four of which who have offenses against kids within three-hundred feet of him. We're asking you guys, our elected leaders, to bring this to a stop, and we're, uh, appreciate the action you guys have taken tonight. On a personal note, this topic gets close to home for me for reasons that I can't share about, uh, can't share publicly here. I can tell you, I have witnessed the, the horror and the unspeakable damage that sex assault does to a family, and most importantly, the victims. Since this initiative started in Hartland, I've had others come forward and share their stories with me, and ask that we and I continue this push for much-needed change in our village. The victims of these individuals are not here speaking today, but I guarantee that they wouldn't be okay with these criminals being placed in close proximity to kids. We and I don't think we're asking too much by asking you, our elected leaders, to lead us and take steps to make Hartland safer. In closing, I'll quote General Schwarzkopf's, Schwartzkopf, everybody knows who he is, of Gulf War, uh, Gulf War fame, by author Frank Fiscusso. If you want to be an elected, sorry, an effective leader, if you want to be an effective leader, that's all of you, you must do, always do two things, one, take charge, and two, do the right thing. Village Board members and Mr. President, we're not interested in what you cannot do, we're interested in what you can do. Do the right thing, do something for this community, and please do it quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I will say that since being on this board, I've never been more proud to live in Hartland than what this movement has done. This is the way things are supposed to work, and you are being listened to.
My name's Valerie, and I'm sorry if I'm gonna cry, but I'm a mom whose son was sexually molested by a local resident who was an educator in our school system. I fought in court for eighteen long, grueling months to get that man put behind prison or behind bars. The Hartland Police Department was amazing in their support of our family and, um, in making sure that we were well-informed as to what our limitations were. I was at the mercy, my family was at the mercy of the court system. This person who molested my then-two-year-old son for almost two summers in a row in swim lessons, pleaded, uh, confessed to his crime, and hired, his family hired a very, um, successful defense attorney, and for eighteen months, we were fighting for this man, at the very least, to be put on the registry, even if it was just for ten years. That situation, first I want to say, you know, Peter, thanks for taking the lead that you have in all of this, and I, I was not able to come to the last meeting. This situation not only destroyed my family, and we're still building from it, but the court system and fighting it for eighteen months and having the courage, of which during this time, I also was diagnosed with cancer, and so I was fighting cancer and for my son's justice. Because he had a really, really savvy defense attorney, and the DA's office's main focus is at least getting him to serve a little bit of time because he did confess to the molestation, his, he was charged for first-degree sexual assault multiple times on a child under the age of twelve, my son was two, he had no voice. His final conviction was causing mental harm. That's it, causing mental harm. But because I finally had my day in court and spoke to the, to the judge, he did get the maximum as if he would have been served at a second degree. And he's on the registry for life. That is, does not come with causing mental harm, but it was the only thing that I wanted, because I did not want him to come back into a community and repeat this offense on another innocent child. So, I'm here as a voice, not only for my own son, but for all the children that live in our community, and how it is very important, and I, we appreciate, I appreciate that you recognize this and you've heard the people. I think that I would like to also make sure, from what Peter said about the ordinance of its only violent sexual crimes, I think that how's the state ordinance of not being within a certain, um, distance between schools and parks, I would love to see the board make an effort to go a little bit further and actually not just make it violent, because my son was not raped, but he was molested multiple times, over and over again, with no voice, but it was not considered violent. In my eyes, it is violent. They violated him, and so, if we were to just go with a very blanket violent sexual crimes against a child, that man would have a right to move back into this community. And I did my research, and when I did my impact statement, most of these crimes, they do not rehabilitate, they will repeat their offense. Even at, under the watch of the, the police department, their hands are tied as well. They can do so much. So, I ask you, on behalf of my son and my family, and as a resident of this community, to please just take it even a step further and really research to not just have this blanket, umbrella terminology, but that it's specific, and that it ensures the safety of our children moving forward. So, thank you for the opportunity to share my story, and I am with all of you in order to try to make an ordinance change in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm hoping no one's going to follow that up. I'm very sorry.
Can we just be clear that for the blanket ordinance, that was saying the state of Wisconsin says that. For, uh, for us to make an ordinance, we don't do, we don't have to pick just, uh, what you're saying, we can do it the way we want to, we can structure it. I mean, there's certain things that we still have to follow, but that's not how it works that way.
See, we're drawing that up now for, for this simple fact, and that's why when it's drawn up, you'll be notified that it's gonna be brought up before it's passed. It isn't gonna be passed, and then all of a sudden you come down, well, it was passed, and there were stuff in there. So, you'll have the availability to look this thing over before it, and if there's any changes, my God, certainly, we're aware of wanting to do something. So, you'll be informed, we'll make sure that there's enough effort on it, 'cause the ordinance, when it's read, it, it could possibly be read three times, that's three board meetings. So, that's a month and a half. So, by that time, everybody should have had an opportunity.
It'll be on the website.
It'd be on the website.
I'm sure it will, but hold, I, I do want to address something with that.
Yeah. So, just so you're aware...
Right now, we have a blank piece of paper.
Yeah.
It's got nothing on it. I want something on that piece of paper, quickly. Which means I don't have the luxury, nor do we have the luxury to make it perfect the first time. What we do have the luxury of doing is getting better and better and better every single time we do it. We can keep on looking on it. I'm going to stress that for me, getting something done quickly does not mean we cannot do it again, and then do it again, and then make it better from there, and make it safer from there. That's how these things work, in my opinion, but waiting until we have it perfect before we do anything is not the best idea. Getting something on the paper is the best idea right now. We take these steps as we go. Uh, it's taken a long time for it to get to where it is now. Now, we have to start taking our steps.
I just have one question. My name is Michael DeBora, I live at ten-fifty-two Woodbridge Court. And my question is to board is, for the, um, computer, you know, you go on the sexual register, I can look at all that, but for the kids that's like five years old and stuff like that, he may not have his computer there or something, is it possible to put this up and piggly-wiggly put their faces, the eighteen offenders, just so the kids could see it?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, it's a public record, isn't it?
It is a public record. It, it, it may very well be, I'm simply saying I don't know.
Alright, I'm just asking a question.
I don't know the answer, and I wouldn't want to say...
And if we could just find that out, because I'd like, my kids are older, I'm, I'm speaking for the little ones.
Right.
If I had a little one, we wouldn't be having this discussion anyway, but...
Right.
And something happened. But what I'm saying, if I had a little one, I want him to be able to see the face of the person.
Yeah, I just don't know, I don't know.
I just want to, there was another one down the street here, he died, I think, but I also was wondering if there's any provisions in place that, that they can't have an animal or a pet. He had a, he had a wheelchair, and, and he used to have a little dog with him. Is there any provisions that say you can't have a little dog or something like that, something to entice a kid?
Uh, there, there may be, those are all the things, as I was just saying, that I want to look into. My most, what's most import, I have four children, sixteen, fifteen, them reading off the ages here, and one just had a birthday, so now I get all screwed up. Sixteen, fifteen, tw- uh, thirteen and twelve, alright? This hits home to me, and it's not easy for me to sit up here and listen to, not because I don't think we should have anything, but because I understand the severity and the realness to just what effect one child goes through. They never get out of prison. It'll weigh on them for their entire lives. And we're talking about someone that gets out.
I, I probably should hear it too.
But I don't know, I'm going to look into each one of those things you are asking, and we want to make things right. I don't know if there's a restriction on dogs or whether we could make one, that they can't have popsicles or puppies, I don't know. But what I do know is that we're looking into it. I give you my word, you can believe it or not, but we've come this far, and we have a motion on the table, which is farther than we've ever come before, and for that, I am very proud.
Because they're already, in my mind, they're already harassing us, so I really don't, I, I want to find out about the pictures. If I can post their pictures up in piggly-wiggly, in the bars, everywhere they go, they can get their little picture up there.
Okay. I will look into that and ask.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else that wants to speak on this issue? Obviously, I'm... Well, to say it quickly, 'cause you, well, you spoke once, go ahead, we'll allow, 'cause this is a big issue, so go ahead.
I just wanted to know that you're talking about expediency and trying to get something drafted quickly. Can you utilize the help of some of the people sitting here that may have either lawyers, you know, lawyers or journalists or somebody that...
We have, we have it, it just takes a little time, I was not able to make it happen by this meeting. If, believe me, if it was up to me to write it and just say, yeah, we can do it, and that would be legal, we'd be, but we're not. Or any one of these people sitting up here, I believe, would do the same thing. I know the world we live in, as, maybe you guys don't realize, but if you do look around sometimes when you're walking in a park or walking in the community, everything seems perfect. When you turn on your TV, I know, some of you may not realize this, but not everybody is always on the same page. I've received an email from an organization that I didn't even know existed. It's a nonprofit organization, for the protection, well-being of sexual offenders, telling me that I should be careful about what I do. So, while you say that, and while I don't agree with that organization, nor will never donate my money there, there are two sides and things that go on, where we want to make sure to get this right legally, because all of a sudden, we're in a situation where the state or federal government knocks down the law, and because it was illegal, it's all wiped off again anyway. This is a big issue, and I understand it, and I can understand you guys being angry or hurt or frustrated. Oh, I didn't know, I didn't know. I didn't know, I didn't know to go and look at the ordinance and say, okay, what's the sexual, uh, restriction ordinance in Hartland? And I almost felt, I almost passed out when I found out there was, and I mean that literally, like where your head rushes with blood, in guilt and feeling like an idiot. But I'm not feeling like an idiot tonight, 'cause I can give you my word. It's going to get done, or someone's gonna sit in front of you publicly and tell you that it's not gonna get done, and then we can deal with that. We're getting it done, I know we want it done quickly. We are farther right now in this moment than we've ever been before, and we are gonna keep marching forward. That's my intent. I'm hearing you, God gave me two ears and one mouth, I'll use them proportionately. Sometimes a little too much with the mouth, but that's because I'm sitting here in this chair, but I am listening. We're gonna get this done, people, and this is the way it's supposed to work, with you sitting there, telling us things, saying what you want. This is important, it's important to me, I can't say it enough, and I can't apologize enough for not catching it. But the second it popped up, I caught it, and so did everyone around you. We are going to get this done, this is not something that's just gonna fall by the wayside, and I can tell by looking at each one of you that you wouldn't let it anyway, even if the board tried to let it, but it won't. And if you don't show up at another meeting, it still won't fall by the wayside, and we will keep on working. I am sorry to any one of you that has been affected by those type of things that happen to children. It's a terrible thing in life, but we gotta work within the confines of the law. Thank you for your efforts and what you all have done, and I will do my part, and I believe each member on this board is going to do the exact same thing. I think everybody has heard you very well and clear. Any other comments? All... Yep. Anybody else that wants to speak, just because this is, please come and just kind of get in line so that we can do it in an orderly fit, 'cause then it helps me know when we're done, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Cooley, we live at one-twenty-two Kestrel Way. I have more of a question slash request. I'm not privy to how the registry and like how the addresses actually like show up on the websites, but if someone moves or purchases a house, and then an offender actually like moves in with another person, so a parent, a friend, or whatever, do they then show up on the registries, and if they don't, can we write, my request would be to write something in the ordinance then, that also is kind of more of a, you know, residence of, maybe not registered, a property owner, even an apartment, you know, their name on the lease, to also include that type of language, so that a friend or a parent can't house a resident who's on a registry. Does that make sense?
That might be possible, those are all things we're looking into. I don't know the exact answer to that. Is it possible, right now with my lack of knowledge?
Yeah.
It's possible until I find out that it's not possible, but these are all the things we're looking into, 'cause we've never done anything.
Okay.
We've never, like, when, I, that's the wrong way to say it, we have never put anything in an ordinance...
Yeah.
To restrict these types of things. I give you my word, I will be looking, and you will have multiple times to speak on this.
Awesome.
If I had that exact answer...
Thank you.
I, I don't have it.
I believe that they are on there. There's one on North Avenue, his dad owns a house, and he's this sexual offender, so I know you have.
Yeah. So, I don't, so that's just a request, as you guys are looking into this.
Yeah, well, we're looking into it, I promise.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on this issue?
I just got a quick comment. I'm just kind of faced off something Mr. Walker said already. It's, it's disheartening to hear that this issue, oh, my name is Dan Osmo, one-two-four Willow Drive. It's disheartening to hear that this issue came up for the board before, and that they were told, oh, there's nothing we can do about it, and then they said, okay, we'll just drop it then. I mean, this is America. When we're told that, we don't accept that. For the last two-hundred years, we say no, and we keep fighting until we get the change that needs to come to fruition.
Let me say something, dear.
Yes.
You know, nobody came, we never had any, in fact, we never had anybody come up, uh, and even question sexual harassment. And that's probably why nothing was done before, 'cause we didn't look into it, like I said before, and I don't want to, uh, go one way, but nobody came up, now we got a group, and we've never had groups like this for, for just about anything outside of when we put in the new auto works or something. But I mean, I'm saying the people, that's why you gotta have people get involved. We were informed that they were here, and like I said, we looked around, we knew we had thirty of them in town, we knew where they were. In fact, I know one of them, see, and I was surprised that where he lives is where he lives. But, uh, nobody ever came up and questioned it until you people came down here.
So, you were satisfied with that, until the people were dissatisfied?
Well, basically, at that...
It's not argued too much, guys, it's not argued.
Okay.
But, no, I'm just, I don't want this to turn into an argument.
No, I, I, I guess I was satisfied, because we were told several times, you could not, you couldn't do anything. And nobody came down with a group of people, not even one person ever came down and said, come and do something. So, everybody accepted the fact that the state took care of it, and the police were watching them, and probably at that time, there weren't thirty of them in there. But I knew for the last seven years, there's been at least twenty of them in town.
Well, I just want to say, I just want to challenge you guys then, that you guys write up this ordinance, and you turn it into whoever, and they say, well, you can't do this, and you can't do that, and you can't do that, that if it's not acceptable, we keep fighting for it and get that changed.
I agree, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Board, any other comments? All in favor of drafting this ordinance and moving in that direction and directing staff to do so, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that motion is carried, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we have, will have a, we will receive a presentation regarding the proposed development of the Glen at Overlook Trails, formerly known as the North Forty. A condominium development on the property located at and adjacent to N fifty-six, W two-eight-six-two-eight. County Highway K, which is Lisbon Road, including the proposed annexation of the property and consideration of a motion to refer the matter to the Plan Commission for review on this item, because this is for presentation only. I won't take any public comments, they can, those comments, this presentation is for now. The public comments can be made at the Plan Commission meeting, which this is going to, for the board also. I request that we really keep questions, if any, limited, this is for presentation sake only, so that the community and the public at large can see the, what is being proposed at the Plan Commission next week. I guess we won't have as many questions as I thought maybe we would.
Looks like the questions will be limited. So, I'm Brian Lindgren with Newman Developments. I guess, let me just say first, I commend the board for taking action to keep the community safe, so. My, my children go to Heartland North, so that's an important topic. But, so, we're here, Matt and Steve, who you usually see here are out of town, so you get me today. We're here to talk about the Glen at Overlook Trails, so since we've been in last time. We gave it a formalized the name of the Glen at Overlook Trails, that has to do with our partnership with Cornerstone Communities. The, the concept, which we were in reviewing in, in the past several months, presenting to the Village Board as well as the Plan Commission, has not substantially changed, it is a fifty-unit, single-family condominium development. So it is on the property formerly known as the North Forty. We seek to preserve the wooded portion of the neighborhood, as well as, as well as have the fifty single-family condo homes. We've going to be incorporating amenities, walking trails, community outdoor spaces and, and things of that nature. In the past couple of months, since we were last here, we have been working on the details of which we submitted to the Plan Commission for their review. So we're excited to be going to that next step, to move this neighborhood forward. We really do believe that this is something that is in, in the best interest and the market is, is asking for this type of homes within the Village of Heartland. It's always been our desire to, to incorporate it into the Village of Heartland, so there will be an annexation proposed as part of this development as well. Open to any questions, but we certainly will be in, you know, fairly frequently in the next, in the coming months to.
Any board member that wants to go to the Plan Commission to have their questions will be there, where it's going to get probably very detailed.
Absolutely, yeah, at this point, we're into the detail layers, which will progressively, we've taken the feedback from the Plan Commission and the Village Board from past meetings, we've incorporated that into our submittals, so we look forward to discussing that.
And anybody from the public that obviously wants to come and, you know, speak about it, hear about it. It will be, that's next Monday would be our monthly Plan, Joint Architectural and Plan, Architectural Board and Plan Commission meeting. Thank you for coming and presenting, so that people know that that's coming up on that agenda.
I have a question.
Okay.
It's always been, everybody's saying about K, you know, and getting in, have you, and I can't really tell on the, on the map, but is that entrance going to be a little wider?
So, yes, we've had our meetings with the County Highway Department, so we've come to an agreement with the County Highway Department on the design of the entrance to the neighborhood as well as the location. We've taken feedback from other trustees and we've made it as, we've made it a little wider, as wide as possible, given the point of access on Highway K. We, we really can't make it any wider than that because of the site distances required when you pull up in a vehicle. But we, we do, we are taking input from the Highway Department, the Plan Commission, et cetera, to, to, to make the entrance as safe as possible with the turning lanes, the view lines, the appearance, the overall appearance entrance into the neighborhood with a, with a boulevard island as well. Yeah, and, and working to take into account potential, and it's, at this point, it's if, and we don't know when, they might make road changes to Highway K, so.
And is there another exit out of there, or is this one entrance, or are they going to?
So at the time of the concept meeting, we did propose, and Matt is on the record for proposing a connection to Southern Oaks Drive in Mary Hill. In the, in the time since the last Village Board meeting we were here, we've met with neighboring property owners. We were engaging communications with neighboring property owners, taking their feedback, specifically the property owner whose driveway we need to cross to make these connections. Our proposal that we've submitted does change that we are proposing a emergency drive only to Southern Oaks Drive. Now ultimately, that'll be up to the Plan Commission and the Village Board to decide whether it is to remain a, 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 emergency access only or a permanent access. But based on feedback, as well as again, trying to work out an arrangement with the neighbor whose driveway we have to cross. We feel like we're making progress, and, and that is one of the things that's important to them, that if we can take their feedback, we hope to get a private agreement worked out so that the village and, and does not need to get involved, that would be our objective.
Thank you, thank you. And if anybody has major questions, like I said, this is mainly presentation, you can go at seven o'clock next Monday at the Plan Commission meeting, where, you know, all of this will be discussed in, in much more detail.
Do we even need a motion to refer?
We're not making.
You do need one, because this includes an annexation, the process that's outlined in the Village Code requires that the Village Board actually refer this matter to the Plan Commission. So you may remember that the only time this comes up is during an annexation, is when we actually have to go through the motion of referring it to the Plan Commission. And I, and the drafting of the ordinance, or the motion rather, in the agenda just simply refers the entire matter, but really, it's the annexation we have to refer. So you do need one motion, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Shoot, okay, I didn't realize that, because I haven't seen the stuff from the county on the road yet.
Just have to refer it over to the.
Oh, we're just referring for them to review, so we're not voting and saying. I'm just clarifying. Dick, that's why I was restricting the, I hope you can respect that, I was restricting the questions because this is Plan Commission, this is just for presentation. So the public can see it, it's not supposed to be deciding anything, I did not realize we needed a motion, I'm sorry to both you, so I was just clarifying. It sounds like this is not something that comes up very often, so this would be the first time it's come out since I've been in this seat.
True.
With that, it's been a motion.
To refer it to the Plan Commission regarding annexation.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to refer this to the Plan Commission, where, again, everybody can go next Monday at seven o'clock. Any more discussion?
I, I just think they did a nice job with the way they designed it, I think that the main objections were the road going through into Four, or, yeah. Mary Hill. And I think they took care of it with just emergency exit, so I don't think we're going to have objections from, from Mary Hill on that.
Right. We'll fight, we'll, we'll see, I'm sure that notices will go out, I'm guessing.
They've actually already gone.
I, I figured that they had, but I'm saying that so that now everybody knows, your notices either have arrived, or they're in your mailbox, or they will be soon. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That's going to the Plan Commission, well, the, the annexation part is going with the rest of this.
It's all going.
You certainly shall.
Yes, you will.
At least we got the eighteen.
Next item on the agenda. We have a consideration of a motion to approve the ordering and purchase of a two thousand nineteen Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicle for delivery in two thousand nineteen from Ewaldall and Motive Group in the anticipated amount of thirty thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars plus final equipment installation by others. It is also, I'm going to add, because we ran into this issue before, this is something that was already on our budget last year when it was voted on. Am I correct in that?
No, this is, this is actually a next year vehicle.
So that, okay, sorry.
It's okay, so, much like the Fire Department's most recent pumper truck. Because there's a lead time here, and in, in this case of the squad, because of the body change and the price change and a short window from Ford, we're asking you to go ahead and approve the order now, rather than waiting until after the budget is approved.
I didn't, I just didn't know, so I'm sorry for.
Like a motion that we approve the purchase of the two, twenty thousand, two thousand, twenty thousand nineteen Ford Police Interceptor vehicle this year.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to purchase the police vehicle in the amount listed. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that motion is carried, thank you, Chief.
Nice job, Ross.
I appreciate you laying it all out and exactly why we need this, who are able to handle the questions well, everything went really smooth.
Did the walkthrough, you told me.
Well, maybe we do need to talk about it. I'm so confused right now, we just moved and voted on that, we're on the last one, consideration of a motion to approve a revised Department of Public Works Director job description. It was in our packet, we saw it, there's changes, obviously, there's a lot of changes going on in the DPW. That doesn't mean we're never going to change a job description, but for right now, that's where we're at now. We have, we're now, we're now in a man at the top of that totem pole, so.
Right, I don't know if you want me to say anything more, as I mentioned in my memo, the changes are really designed to broaden the background potential for the individual. We considered a number of options, really kind of weighed things out, and, and ultimately, in, at the end, decided the best way to serve the department and the village was to hire that position anew with the potential for a broader background, so that's.
I did meet with Administrator Cox, and we talked and discussed this over. We used to do more of, I'm going to say there used to be, just a more, I mean, it really narrowed it down to a specific type of person with a specific type of background, where we've broadened it some so that, you know, it, it opens it up that they can, we're probably going to have more from the pool. But, you know, their managerial background and the different backgrounds that come, it's not just straight, you know.
Engineering.
Yeah, that's the real one that really changed. Sorry, I just shouldn't even talk, because that just was really confusing you and me, sorry, it's been a long night. So with that.
Somebody needs to make.
I know, I'm, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve the changes to the job description for Director of Public Works.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that motion is carried.
Thank you, we'll get started on hiring right away.
The next items on our agenda are announcements. Go ahead, our Finance Director.
Uh, just wanted to remind the board and the public that Wednesday, September nineteenth, and Thursday, September twentieth, is the public budget meetings, we will be in here from starting at five-thirty each of those days for those meetings for the two thousand nineteen budget process.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
So, five-thirty, we want to sit down and start meeting, after five o'clock, we'll have food here for you so that you can grab your quick dinner, and then we'll sit down and start.
And that's, yeah, next Wednesday, next Thursday, in this, in this room, open to the public.
Watch, we're going to have forty people in here, like, I thought you said you.
Did you say a case?
Chief?
Steve Dean, Heartland Fire Chief, just a couple of quick notes, a handouts are, been advertised. Darlene has done a great job getting it into our booklet for the village, Village Happenings. The fundraiser for the Pancake Breakfast is, geez, you'd think I'd have it memorized by now, I did, it's October thirteenth at the Heartland Fire Department. We will be serving pancakes from seven to noon and having lots of fun. Donations of baskets and things will be available to bid on, there'll be popcorn there, all kinds of good stuff. Yes, donations of blood will always be accepted, absolutely, yep, we will be there with the Blood Center of Wisconsin. And then following that, on the October seventeenth and eighteenth, will be our second annual pizza fundraiser where we deliver pizzas in a fire truck from enters. And while we're at the residence, we check their smoke detector, offer free batteries, and this year, we're going to work on offering carbon monoxide alarm checks as well, so get them prepared for the winter season. It was very popular last year, it sold out, we delivered ninety-five pizzas, it sold out within fifteen, twenty minutes. So it, we're not taking orders until the night before, October fifteenth at four. So the phone lines, be standing by your phones, ready to go. Get your pre-order, and you can, new this year, we're going to offer a take and bake, you can take home with you, so it doesn't have to be delivered fresh and hot. And then also twenty percent of the proceeds from the restaurant inside sales will go to the Fire Department as well.
I don't know if it, it's out of line if I do this or not, but are the batteries purchased already?
No, they're not.
Would it be possible for me to donate the batteries?
Yeah, you and I can discuss that, absolutely.
Okay.
That's great, we buy them from a local distributor. And then also, just a reminder to the, to listening members, and as tomorrow is very near and dear to my heart and it should be to all Americans, please fly your flags, take a moment tomorrow to reflect on how fortunate we are in the United States, and be thankful for what we have and what we've accomplished, and enjoy the day.
The microphone's still on, that's. Chief.
I feel bad that you guys didn't let me talk last time, so I wanted to say something. The next meeting we have, September twenty-fourth, we are swearing in our new chief. So all of you are aware, after the Village Board meeting, we're going to be meeting in the community room with Cake and Coffee. We can introduce you to the new chief, you can ask questions, just to kind of get a feel for where he's at. And if you need anything before that, let me know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Colera. That's it, nothing else?
So I kind of want to go backwards for a moment, because you went very, very fast over the village, over the DPW.
Oh.
And I'm really sorry, because you said questions and then went right on and started to talk, so.
I went too, I'm sorry, I went too quick.
So I did have a couple of questions on it, and I don't know how to handle it now.
I'm just, to make this official, correct me if I'm wrong, is the board okay with us going back to that item? Because there's questions, am I doing that correctly? I just want to make sure there's not all of a sudden someone saying something, you know the rules and stuff, so you can.
As long as I get home by ten-thirty, it's very missing.
Well, these are my notes.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, in the repositioning of it, why it's becoming a part-time person? Looks like you're, like you're going to take over part of the.
No, no, that was an item that I was considering.
Okay.
In the end, the decision was that that wouldn't work well.
Okay, because I don't think it, I mean, no.
That's a, that will be a regular full-time Department of Public Works Director, separate from me. Stand alone at the, at the top of that organization, of that part of the organization.
Then I, I go ahead and approve it too. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Any other announcements from members of the board? I have a couple. They're not necessarily announcements, but tonight's been so different than any other normal meeting I've sat up here for. I'm going to do it this way, I just want to tell each one of you, for the people on staff, the people, all of you in the Police Department, the first responders, and everyone else in this community, the residents that stood in here, I've been on that side before, now I'm here. And for each one of you that are on the board, I guess I just wanted to tell all of you, I mean, I really am proud to be here in Heartland with what we're doing. There's times when we've, there's times where there's either been mistakes or something's wrong, but we fix it. And I think that we're getting more and more open, that, that's not taking away from anybody. But the people are starting to get more, let's say the people are starting to get more involved, the board was always here, but the people are really getting more involved. And I'm really proud to see so many people. And I'm really proud to see so many people working together in this community. I really am. And I'm just very, very proud to be serving with you guys and to have been here on a part of something like what just happened, because it was... it's the way it's supposed to work. That's the best way that I can say it. That's the way I believe government should work. The people speak, and the representatives represent. When there's a ton of them, it makes it easy. I just... I'm very proud to serve with each one of you and that we could do this tonight, and I hope that you're proud of yourselves, because I think it's great that we're doing it with that ordinance regarding any restrictions we're going to put on. So thank you for listening in the mic. Say you. Administrator Cox, have you had comments? Or any announcements? I'm sorry for passing. Anybody else?
I motion re-adjourn.
That's it?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that this meeting be adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.